I call to order the Gladstone City Council Work Session for July twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's five thirty P M. The City of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill twenty-five sixty, which requires we make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide the opportunity for the general public to participate to the best of our ability. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The council members and staff will be in person in our council chambers, as well as those citizens that wish to attend in person. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. The work session is a time for the council and staff to discuss matters openly and informally, and public comment is not part of our agenda and is not allowed. Attendees will not be able to speak during this work session. We will not have a consent agenda, business from the audience nor business from the council. We have only one item on our agenda this evening, and that is the Gladstone Community Event Sponsorship Program. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Present.
Counselor Hartman.
Here.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Stempel.
Here. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Legions?
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So as I said, we only have one item. City Administrator Betts, Tourism Consultant Lori Bell, and Jim Austin, who is the Development and Community Relations Coordinator for Oregon's Mount Hood Territory, will provide an overview of the use of transient lodging tax dollars and the proposed Gladstone Community Event Sponsorship Program. Steph?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, City Council. I think that's a great segue into what we want to talk to you about tonight. We're actually very excited for the work that we've been doing in Gladstone on promoting ourselves. And so what we're going to do, we have a specific program in your packet to talk about, which is the Community Event Sponsorship Program. But before that, we're going to have Lori kind of give a little PowerPoint overview of what we've been doing in Gladstone.
Hold tight for just a moment. You all see it on your screens?
Yes.
Perfect.
You're good.
Great. Thank you so much. So I'm going to hit this. My name's Lori Bell. I am a consultant that works in tourism, and I've worked for you guys for about two years now. Here with me today is my friend and colleague, Jim Austin, who has over ten years of experience in tourism in Oregon. So he is my local expert and guru. Would you add anything to your title or my introduction of you, Jim?
No, but I need new business, so I think I will.
Okay. Okay. So much, yeah, much like Jackie said, I'm just going to give you sort of an update what, how we got to where we're at today, things I've done. And then you all have in front of you our proposed sponsorship program, which I'm hoping you've had some time to review, and we'll go from there. So T L T, does everybody know what that stands for?
Transit Lodging Tax.
Transit Lodging Tax or Travel Lodging Tax? That's correct. The City of Gladstone passed ordinance fourteen seventy-nine in November of two thousand and seventeen. So that's when you started collecting this tax. To my recollection, I think you held it for about a year, built up to sort of see what was going to come from that. And then shortly thereafter, I was hired and I put together a request for proposal. I'll back up. You agreed to a six percent travel lodging tax, so that's what we've been collecting for now. And then in two thousand and nineteen, I put together a request for proposal to recruit and solicit some strategy and brand developments, which we completed in February of two thousand and twenty. Some deliverables from that brand, you may recall, we hired and selected, some of you were on that selection committee, Rotator Creative, which was a firm that did a lot of stakeholder engagement, spent many times speaking with visitors and local residents. Over the course of time, they identified a few key assets and areas of focus that were best suited for the City of Gladstone to invest in, the big tourism draws. Those categories are in front of you, were broken out into Parks and Nature Access, including the river, which is a big golden star in your community. The Main Street Appeal of Gladstone. Community events and sports, sporting events are big draws for visitors, as well as family life and neighborhoods. And then certainly last but not least is the history of Gladstone. So once we identified that, we started to strategically roll this out. They developed and designed the logo you see in front of you, Gladstone, Oregon. Does anybody recall from past maybe presentations where that logo came from or what it represents? Yes. Would you want to share with the group?
It's the river, it's the, well, it's actually the confluence of both the rivers, and that's about it, isn't it? I mean, and the shape of the city.
Yeah. Yes, it's very similar in shape to the heart of that. The colors represent the sky and the waters, certainly Gladstone school colors as well. So what we did was start to roll that out so that we could identify, this is Gladstone. The key element of our strategy and branding goal was so that people would recognize, I'm in Gladstone, this is Gladstone. So we did some street banners that you may recognize, those adorable reusable bags that my dog so graciously is modeling for you. We did some staff apparel over at Christmas, I think, to get those out. We had a cup, a big project that we were considering, which was the sidewalk art proposal at the center of Dartmouth. You'll notice as you drive into Meldrum Bar, the park fee kiosk is wrapped with a clear logo as well as the receipt. I looked at several other things from flower baskets, lighting projects, possible painting of the poles. And then we went on to wayfinding signs. So many of those you probably have seen at the entrances to your parks. Parks and Nature being a key element of the City of Gladstone. I want to point out and take a moment to give us some accolades that we did recently receive some praise from the county. The Public and Government Affairs Director had her staff reach out to Jackie and then further with myself to ask us, how indeed did we come up with such a great logo? And how also did we roll it out so seamlessly and smoothly? The perception from the county staff was that we did a wonderful job, and they wanted to learn from how we did it. So kudos for that. Some other deliverables that we have built on very strategically is a close partnership with a hotel. They have a new manager, her name is Sierra. I work closely with her to understand and identify group bookings. So our key goal is to identify who comes to Gladstone, who's already coming here. What we identified early on is that it's not easy to get people to come here for, you know, we don't have a Disneyland per se or something like that. But what we like to do is get them out of the hotel and around town while they're here. Some other key partnerships are the Harley-Davidson, they bring visitors from all over the country, as does First Tee Golf, Energy Kayak, and then the car show that's going to be coming up next weekend as well. So going into the future, we have proposed what's in front of you today, a community grant program so that we can engage the community to host, to help support our key strategies that were identified by Rotator. There, we'll talk about those a little bit more. But also in the future, you will see myself alongside Jackie mostly, but at your community festival in gathering information. I'll be asking attendees three key pieces of information. What zip code are you from? How did you hear about this? And how many people are in your group? So those are the key pieces of information we want to know. We, I have recently met with your Historical Society and given them some key sort of feedback and tools and how to help build the history of Gladstone and ways we can help support that. We will continue to support our tourism-facing businesses, everyone on Main Street. Other possibilities include a fall fishing campaign. We know from studies done by Mount Hood Territory and Travel Oregon that fishermen spend dollars. They like to stay in hotels, they don't like to camp, they wake up early, and they often eat out. We have great fishing runs here in Gladstone, so we will be learning more about them. Meldrum Bar has a tremendous opportunity to bring visitors, and we continue to want to support those opportunities from pickleball to youth sports. And again, water access is a very unique feature that you have in Gladstone, not easily found around Portland. And those are my key updates that I wanted to share with you, just kind of let you know how we got to where we are today. And I think our main discussion item is the program that's in front of you. What questions do you have? What do you want to know about what we've done so far? And what else am I missing?
So I think that is, it's a great summary. Tonight, we're only specifically talking about this event sponsorship program. Going forward, what are we going to do with the rest of our transient lodging tax dollars? Will be a later conversation. We're proposing to allocate fifty thousand dollars to this program. And if you give us the head nod to go forward, we would put it on the consent agenda in August to immediately start promoting this. I think what would be helpful, and I'm going to ask Jim to do this, is that we have to be very careful on how we spend our transient lodging tax dollars because they really have to go towards enticing people from outside the area to come and experience Gladstone. But some people in the community think that what they do inspires people to come from the outside, but it doesn't really qualify. So Jim, can you just talk a little bit about what the tourism dollars can be spent on?
Sure. Since I'm a guru, yeah, it's state statute, it's tourism promotion and development and event support. And definition is a tourism, well, part of it's in here is someone who comes from outside the community, into your community, from their, for business, recreation or pleasure. Technically, it's more than fifty miles away, that's kind of a tough sell. We had a community grant-based program for, that I managed for a really long time and supported a lot of events. And we were always trying to like, we kept tweaking it and tweaking it, trying to get down towards, is this just, you know, like honestly, is this a community event? They're great, they serve a purpose, but really the purpose, there's different colors of money, I guess, if you will. It's like, these funds are for this, these ones, these funds can be used for this. Can it's road, road tax dollars for, for trail development? But are we, like, are we supporting activities and events that are likely to or reasonably expected to bring in visitors from, from outside the community? If, if there are activities and events that also have benefit and there's, there's a community benefit, that's fantastic. But, you know, is it a new event? Is it sustainable? Is it going to grow, grow the event, bring in more, more variety to the event? That's what we, that's a, that's what we try to adhere to. That's, that's basically it. It's a seventy-thirty split. So you guys have thirty percent, I guess, you can use for whatever purposes, others, other purposes, but the seventy percent should be used for, as our reading evidence, for tourism promotion and development. And as best as we've tried to do and shared information with Lori to create programs that's, that support that. That are sort of true to that, that intended purpose of those funds, so.
And I think that that's, that's important because Jim has reviewed this because we want their blessing that what we're proposing is an allowed use of these funds. We have already had a public records request from the Lodging Association in Oregon about how we've spent our funds this far. We know they're our watchdog, so we want to be very thoughtful and careful on how we're spending that. The seventy percent, thirty percent split he was talking about, thirty percent of ours goes into general fund. The seventy percent, that's where this fifty thousand dollars would be coming from. And so the application that you see has been vetted by Lori, Mount Hood Territory, and we tried to make it as streamlined and as easy as possible because we know what it's like to apply for grants, and it can be very difficult. And so what, what you have here is what the application would look like, that there would be up to a maximum of five thousand dollars per event. It is a matching grant, so they would need to also put in money for that. We have the process highlighted on the quarters that we would allocate the funding. So if we did launch this in August, we would want to award for any events that were happening by October first. At quarterly basis, we feel like would be sufficient for our finance manager to pick up an administrative piece on this. The application can be fillable online. We put an application review committee together that would include an employee from Mount Hood Territory, a representative from the hospitality industry. So for example, maybe the Holiday Inn manager would like to participate in this. It would be the city's tourism consultant, who is Lori. And those applications would be rated against the criteria that is set forth below you. Then they would make a recommendation to me, and we would award out the funds to do that. And then they also have to submit a report after they've had their event and they've received the funds. So we have simplified it as easy as we can. One of the questions leading up to this is, can the city apply for its own money? Can the city do its own programs? And so do you want to address that a little bit, Lori?
Sure. So the short answer is yes. The long answer is who, what, where, when, why, and how. You're very familiar with your staff size and your staff goals and priorities. It would be and is a best practice, particularly for the terms of this grant, for a group or a formal organization to be that host. We built this, I built this grant program based very closely to replicate this, the County CPP Grant Program that they have initiated for several years. And I was a awardee of, at the City of Oregon City. So in our history of that, we did not award grants to the city, even if they applied. We preferred to give them to other groups because that was the intent. The intent is for the community to participate in their tourism activities. Does that answer the question? Okay. Short answer, yes.
Okay. So with that, we would entertain any questions. But specifically tonight, we also need some direction in regards to a proposed music festival and Halloween event, which Halloween would not qualify for transient lodging tax because the premise really is to entice our children, community members, to come down and go trick or treating. But I think the reason why it's on this agenda tonight is to get some consensus that we want to go forward with that event like we have in the past, where the city is actually the applicant for the special events license. So we can handle that direction separately. I think for now, if we can kind of have a conversation about, do you like what we're proposing? Do you want to see anything different? Since we have the T L T expertise here tonight, so that we can finalize this program, get it in place, and then maybe talk a little bit about the music festival.
Okay, and just so you all know, I invited Jeff and Matt. Andrew, excuse me. Thinking of my notes here, trying to get all straight. Jeff and Andrew here, who are kind of the coordinators for the music festival, it was their idea. So that's who Greg and I have been talking to. All right, questions or concerns? Counselor Garlington.
Just a couple. So on page.
Can you turn on your microphone, please?
My apologies. On page one, two, it says the application process. So I know that the fest, like, the festival, I'm just going to use them as a, what if?
The community festival?
Yeah, the community festival. That next year will be the Chautauqua Festival, I hear, again. So they're in, they do their stuff for a year. Does, does, do these deadlines give enough time for something to actually happen? Because if you're trying to put on something, every dollar counts. And it's, it would be hard for some of, an event to move forward without knowing whether or not they're going to have some funding. So I'm just going to throw out my questions and then I'll just be done. On number, on page one, three, number four, it says here that you have to have the proof of a five oh one C three or private business sponsorship. So then on page four, you ask if there's a nonprofit. And I kind of think that maybe right under that, it should be, if it says no, that right under that, you should have your sponsorship person. In other words, if they can't get one of those two things, they should not even continue with the application.
Yeah, I think that would be accurate.
Okay.
Can I clarify, are you recommending then a suggestion to edit the form?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And then what is the expectation of the, the return report? You were speaking of Administrator Betts. What kinds of things would you be asking for from people who receive it? Are you, is it, how did it go, problems? Money, do they have to spell out how they spent their dollars entirely?
Did we discuss?
You mentioned it.
So first I want, yeah, first I want to say you asked a question about the community events, the community festival?
Yeah, and I was just wondering, for time's sake.
Sure. So if I'm hearing you right, is your question, would this year's two thousand and twenty-two Community Festival be eligible for these grant funds?
No, my question is, is the timelines given on here enough time for someone to foresee and plan ahead in order to use those dollars? Or are we too short of a, of a timeline? In my, in my group that we, I work with at the nature park, we're six months to out easily. If we're going to plan something, that first initial yes is at least six months out.
Yes, and I applaud that. The more in advance you plan, the better.
Yeah.
We did the timeline quarterly so that we can work with the finance department here internally to be able to process the funds quickly. If you know that you're going to a plan for an event for six months out, you can certainly request those funds sooner. And I believe our turnaround time is, we will meet once a quarter as a review committee to look at those. So as long as you've applied the quarter before, you would have a response quick, quick enough to know whether you got the funding or not.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so that is, if I'm answering, if I'm hearing your question right, yes.
And part of this would be me reaching out to the community festival leadership to tell them that you're probably looking at the February twenty eighth deadline, so we can award you April first. They could even do it November thirtieth of this year if they wanted to for the next year.
Okay.
So as long as they know they're going to have the event again next year, then from November thirtieth or February twenty eighth, they should be fine to apply for and receive funds.
So people who would apply for these funds then could say, well, I, I'm, I'm putting in my application, but I want it for this quarter because this is when our, because this is when our event is. And you, and or somebody would help them.
Correct.
Okay.
And it, it would be a administrative hardship for our staff because we're so small to continue to award on an application-by-application basis.
Right.
We thought two times a year was too much, so we said, let's try quarterly. It may or may not work for this first year. We'll flush that out, but we want to be flexible on that.
Okay. Yeah. Yes, please.
So our grant programs that we rolled out for communities, they were available for probably similar events that would apply for, for these funds here. And we only did it once a year, so having, having four, four open window periods is pretty, pretty generous and spread out throughout the year, so.
Okay. And then the return report? So I, I think we put in a sample, we haven't formalized one yet. So I'm open to suggestions, but my first thoughts are going to be, well, how many attendees attended, what zip codes they came from. And I believe I used a really similar report to the CPP Grants from Mount Hood Territory. I don't know if it's included in your packet.
No, it's not in this packet. It only mentions in the program that they will have to provide a brief report and that they will receive an outline when they receive their sponsorship award. Basically, we want, we don't want to do a detailed audit, but we want to make sure that they use the funds like they said they were going to use the funds. But we can draft a outline of what that report would look like and have you, as a council, take a look at that as well.
Oh, you don't have to do that, unless somebody else wants to see it. I was just asking what kinds of things would.
I think one thing too to point out is I probably, most likely will include something to verify how it was advertised outside of the area so that we can, that is a key element, is that you are recruiting and encouraging visitors from outside of Gladstone. So that will need to be documented as well.
So, yeah, we too, we had end of project reports. And so our application was like, what do you expect? You know, what's your attendance, what's this, what's this? And then the final year report was, so what happened? Did you meet the expectations? Did you have all the partnerships that you said that you were going to have to support this event? Did they materialize? Did they not? What could you, I'm trying to prompt into better event management, like what could be done differently next year to make it better or more sustainable? Like, it's like, you said this, what happened? What could make it better? What, what helped, what would be needed to help make it better, et cetera? So just sort of a continuing evolutionary thought process, creating stable, sustainable events.
And as part of the application process, when I managed grants in other cities with, with similar goals and outcomes, I'm very keen on helping the advertisers and giving them ideas to promote your, you know, to advertise certainly in your hotel. We know those are your visitors and we know they're at capacity. So that's a missed opportunity, would encourage them to promote their events at the hotel. At First Tee, if it's a family event, because kids come from all over to go there, things like that. So we would be around to help connect them to sort of those key places where we know visitors are already coming.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Todd.
My question was very similar to yours, was the, having it be quarterly, there's not a timeframe where that money needs to be spent, right? I mean, it, you could be planning well in advance, but it has to be spent by the time of the actual event. The, just using Gladstone Community Festival as, you know, sort of a, a topic that we could understand. They would only qualify for the grant if they were adding something to the existing festival. Is that correct? It's, it's not just to maintain the festival as they, as it's been set up, it would be adding something, correct?
Yeah, we would definitely want them to add to it, and I think they could do, you know, they would be explaining. Does anybody here have a coordinator of the festival?
I do the praise.
Okay, great. So how you're promoting it and how you're advertising it to increase your, your scope of, you know, recruiting visitors, that would be a key piece to make sure you put in there.
Okay, and so, but it's not meant to be a yearly returning thing. I mean, so you may do it one year, could you get it the next year?
If you could prove that you were expanding it somehow, that you were increasing visitors, and, you know, maybe you had a different strategy that targeted a specific area. Like you may, for example, this year identify, wow, we have a lot of zip codes from Hillsborough for some reason. So you may use that next year and say, we are really going to target and advertise in Hillsborough because for some reason that community is coming to us, something like that.
Okay.
But you would need to be building on it.
Yeah, but it's definitely not just for our own community events. This is, this is for bringing new faces, people, dollars.
Yeah, and we really wanted to try to avoid similar experiences that Jim and I both had with other grantees and that, you know, sometimes organizations may get in the habit of just getting the same five thousand year after year for their same event, and that's not very inclusive. That doesn't increase your awareness, your diversity, doesn't increase your exposure to other groups of people. And we want to, we want to continue to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hartman.
Thank you. I totally trust both of your expertise in this, so I looked at this as someone who works with grants and through that lens. So I have questions. I was curious, so I know that on page one, two, one dash two, it had reimbursement for agreed-upon expenses. But I don't see anywhere in here what those agreed-upon expenses were. Is it specific to marketing? Is it like hiring people, like are there, are there certain limitations to what the expenses are?
Very good question. Thank you for using your grant lens. I'm like, wait a second, that's really good.
Agreed upon.
Language in there, and I'm doing my best to recall how we came up with this. But what, what is important to me is that when I get these receipts, when they come in and I present them to finance, that they are reimbursable. So as long as I don't get a dental bill or a car, these are actual things that I have received in the past for grants, community grants, car insurance bill, wine purchased at a various weird location, those kinds of things that are, we just know are clearly not going to be able to say, no, this is our way to be able to say, this is not a reasonable expense that is in line with what you propose as your event. So we may have to say no to that.
Right, but it can be entertainment, tables, chairs.
Advertising.
Insurance.
Insurance. Actually, I'm not going to bet my kid's life on that. Most of the time, well, let me rephrase this. A best practice is that an event, an organization that comes in to get money for an event already has liability insurance.
Right.
For their organization, and what we would ask for as part of the For their organization, and what we would ask for as part of the event application is proof of adding the city of Gladstone onto their insurance agreement. We would necessarily want you to use your funds to do that, because you should already have that insurance in place. The funds should be used directly for the event.
Perfect.
If that makes sense.
Yes, it does, yeah.
And that's kind of how you introduce what our finance manager doesn't like, the shell game, where you say you can use funds you have for your insurance and we'll give you grant funds for another piece of your festival to do that.
Okay.
That's what we would recommend is.
And I'm, I'm assuming people then submit their budget ahead of time, like this is what the funds are going to be spent on?
They can, they don't have to.
Oh.
Uh, I don't think that we required that ahead of time, we want a general, I don't actually have the grant, I'm so sorry, in front of me, I should have printed that. Um, but in their grant proposal, they're going to tell us what they propose to use it for, so that it should be pretty spelled out.
Lined, okay, okay, cool.
Um, thank you.
Yeah, and then in terms of, and you kind of touched on it, Councilor Todd, um, can you just clarify, how long do they have to spend the money? So you, let's say you get it, you know, October 1st, um, do you have until October 1st of the next year? Like if you apply, I apply now because I know I'm gonna have a vet, I don't know when yet, but I know it's gonna be next year, is that?
Yeah, I think the intent going into this, and we'll have to clarify, is within a year.
Within a year, okay.
So we need to put language in there that it has to be spent within a calendar year, or, um, it could be a fiscal year. If they receive in October 2022, they have to spend it by October 2023. I, I think we do need some clarity in there.
Okay, um, and then, uh, sorry, um, so it does say, you know, um, blah, 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 5,000 per event and are available from one, for one event per organization per year. And I, I just wanted to touch on that a little bit, cause we see like really great return with consistency. So it's like if we wanted to have music festivals once a month or once a week, you know, or something like that, is, would that just completely disqualify them? Or if it was the same organization and you laid out four events, it's great, it's consistent for people to come in every week? They still see benefit in that, but I just wanted to.
You're so right, there is a lot of benefit in that, for example, Oregon City does, uh, Thursday night concerts, uh, and they are packed.
Yeah.
That is not our intention for this grant.
Okay.
We wanted to start it simple and specific and with the knowledge that we can build on it if we want to, because it's entirely possible that a year from now, you know, say for example, um, the CarFest may be a bad example, but, you know, it's so huge. He decides he wants to do it once a quarter.
Yeah.
Right? Um, and if he could very clearly demonstrate that this brings, you know, visitors from five different states, they all stayed in the hotel, we may want to reconsider our terms, but at this point, it's really best for us to start sort of small and succinct. Um, so that an organization has the opportunity to be sustainable by themselves.
Right.
The, the funds aren't intended to sustain an organization for ongoing events.
For sure, for sure.
Yeah, but really good point.
Thank you. Um, and the last question, it just in terms of, um, that final report and deliverables for the organization, whoever it may be, like, are there gonna be data points that are wanting to be collected? Like you were saying, you're gonna ask for zip code and all of those things, are we gonna ask that of these organizations to collect that data? I think, yeah, okay, just making sure it's like really, cause I've been in a situation where it's like, oh, hey, I forgot, you need to ask these three points and then you're having to go back and find the data. So having that clear.
That's, it's such a good point, and I would welcome any, especially if you have experience with grants, specific, uh, data points that you would like us to recommend or include, we can certainly do that. I know I've been in situations before where I've gotten a report that said there were a certain number of people at the event, and I was actually at the event and it wasn't true. So, uh, we need really clear data points, and I don't anticipate that would happen here, but it, it's more so that we don't have to deal with that.
Yeah, I think like the folks that, the guys who are watching or the people who are watching the audit of like, well, how, where's this money being spent? And like, are we actually servicing people in that 50 mile or out of that 50 mile? Like, yeah, look at those data I have, you know, so, uh, that's why I said, but thank you, those are all.
Did you want to add something, Jim?
Yeah, we, uh, in our grant program, you know, you could do, um, if this is kind of more of a sponsorship than, than a grant, they could, uh, they could invoice, send a city to the invoice with like the deliverable sort of, this is what's agreed to. Um, so it's kind of like a contract, but it's not, it's a contract light, but that's, that's what you're agreeing to, and that's codified or captured, um, for lack of, it'd be an invoice, but for lack of a better description, like a funding agreement. Um, and then, yeah, you know, an MOU light and that, all of that comes with a lot, a lot more process. Um, but we also had a condition where if people weren't, um, if they didn't follow up, there was a, there was an end activity report and they didn't submit, they requested or didn't respond to questions, you're ineligible, you don't get money. There was a couple of people were like, oh, we just didn't do it, and it's like, here comes the application for, you know, a, a follow-up enhancement of a, of a event from a previous year. It's like, you never did your report, I keep track of the emails I sent out, I sent you three emails, you just ignored it. Not gonna accept your application, save, save yourself, save yourselves a double and don't, don't submit an application.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you did, yeah, you need to hold, hold people accountable for, for following through all the degree.
All right, Councilor Tracy.
No questions.
Councilor Alexander.
Just to understand, so you get the application, you fill it out, and then you, you get approved and you get the, the, the money? And then if you don't follow up, you don't get it again. But, and then also on here where you say, uh, explain why someone would travel 50 miles. I don't, I, I'm just not understanding the 50 miles, I go to Westlands, I go to Sherwood's, I go to, you know, I mean, that brings people from outside the community. Why does it have to be 50 miles? Why can't you just bring neighboring communities and a bunch of musicians over in Westland or Milwaukee, wanna come hear the band? You know, at, at, uh, on Portland Avenue, why can't they just come and see it? Why is it gotta be, and do we have to have them, the counselor, um, um, Hartman's thing where you have to sign? I mean, you have to sign like, this is where I'm from here, so you're gonna have like a sheet sitting there for.
I want your child's middle name.
Well, it seems like if you want another zip code, not others, I mean.
It's true, well, the, the zip code is actually quite easy, because most of the time, especially if you're taking a credit card payment, uh, the zip codes are associated with payments. So we don't need your street address or anything like that, your zip code shows us where you live. I fully hear where you're coming from, I live in Colton, so I'm a tourist everywhere I go, I think, uh, but technically it's not 50 miles, it's about 37. Um, but it's, it's what, what we're pulling from and what I'm referencing is specific to the Oregon statute and their definition of a tourist is 50 miles. Can you elaborate on how they came to that? Cause I don't know.
A lot of discussion when they created the, the legislation that created the Oregon Tourism Commission and some other things for local transient lodging taxes. They came up with 50 miles, but you think if it's, you know, if you're pulling in people from outside of, outside of the community, it's generally, again, the only, you're trying to stay true as much as possible to the intent of the legisla, of the, of the legislation, which is to bring people in from outside your, outside of your, from their community into your community, uh, to spend money. It's kind of like a, can I say pyramid scheme or is this being recorded? But right, it's like reusing other people's money that they're spending on transient lodging taxes, because they've come from somewhere else and we're trying to entice other people to come here and spend more money. Like it's, it's self-funding economic development and business development for, for local communities. Um, technically it's 50 miles, I've never heard anybody really squat. There's different kinds of events, some events are ticketed, like Lori said, you buy a ticket online, there's zip codes you can pull. Um, I just heard from, uh, Bryce at Oregon City Brewing at the Oregon City Business Alliance today, they had their Oregon City Brew Festival. You might think, eh, well, is that really a community event? But he's like, he's like, well, I can tell you from our credit card purchases for the event, we had sixty, over 60% of people who bought online tickets came from greater than 20 miles away from Oregon City. So I would say like, okay, you've, you've, you've hit the mark close enough, you're in the, you're in this, in the center there, so that's, that's where you're generally trying to always refocus as much as possible to keep it sort of true to the intent.
So fair answer to number seven, well, explain why someone would travel 50 miles or more. Well, because when you grant me this money, I'm gonna send flyers out to people over 50 miles away.
Or, or, uh, purchase social media, and so we offer a lot of a co-op digital, um, and print media co-op opportunities or for partners for people who are putting on events, so, you know, they could get some money from you for a sponsorship for an event and they'd be like, oh, um, talk to us and get some, um, social media, um, some advice, and it's creepy, like, like social, social media marketing and digital marketing is sexy creepy stuff. Like, you know, um, and I can tell you, come back about some, some sexy creepy data tracking stuff that we're buying into in the future. We can actually zoom in and tell you where people have come in from to an event for an, for a day.
We're not doing that.
Like where they've come in. But, I mean, it's good, it's good ground, it's good, it's, it's good ground, ground truthing, it's like, you know, are people really coming in? But it's also gonna allow us at the, at the, at the county level to find out, to see where people are, you know, look at large patterns. It's not individual data, we're not tracking you, Council, uh, Councilor Alexander, um, but it's like, you know, why are people coming on these, for the third Wednesday or the third weekend out to someplace out in Malala every, what's going on out there? So we can go like, oh, there's something there. And part of this is finding out what's already happening, so we can capitalize on it, it's like find what's already working, what is attracting people to, to, to communities? And then trying to figure out how to make it grow, if the partners involved do indeed want to make it grow, maybe it's something they want to keep sort of smaller, but yeah.
All right, thank you.
It's an antiquated statute, back when fundamentally transient lodging tax was instituted. The idea was that hotels have to collect this tax, right? And so they have to raise their rates to collect the tax and then they pass it on to the city. They want reassurance that we are promoting an event that is going to allow people to come to Gladstone, but I'm still gonna stay at the Holiday Inn to try to get more heads in beds. And that is the cliche, is that the money's coming from the hospitality industry, so you're trying to have events that's going to encourage people for overnight stays. But in the metro area, that is very difficult, because, uh, there are so many communities with other events going on. And so I think that what, this is only the start, we don't know what we're cap, capable of. We just want to be very careful that we don't get, um, another audit request from the Oregon Lodging Association requesting to understand how we spent our funds. And for them to come back and say, we believe those were community-based funds and not really marketing towards a greater population.
Councilor Ripley.
I think my only thoughts, well, I have a couple of thoughts. People try to travel all over the country to look at birds, and we just let a bunch of butterflies out. You'd get people from, that is it worth spending a thousand dollars advertising on the East Coast when you know you get one or two people? So it might be, they might not, you might only get one or two for that event, but they might come back. Uh, my other thought was, our youth sports could really use that type of stuff. But we also have groups showing up in a town that we'd really rather not have here, is it gonna be that big of a deal to deny the request for money?
Those are really good questions. I can tell you that, first of all, you really tapped into youth sports, those are one of our largest group purchasers of our hotel rooms. Our youth sports, not even just Gladstone events, but like when they have tourist tournaments in Happy Valley in Oregon City, they often stay at our hotel as well. Uh, and your Tiger Fruit just had 30 kids, uh, last week, and that came directly from the hotel, cause they were here from a sporting event, so you know your market. Uh, regarding saying no, those would be one-off opportunities, I think our job is to look at the application and see what comes in and then make a decision from there. Yeah, they would need to be a formal 501(c)(3) or a formal organization as a first start, um, so we would just take applications as they come. Thank you for asking that, though.
So we're not requiring them to be a 501(c)(3).
Or a, uh, license, but they need to be a business, it can't be, it can't be Lori Bell fan of Portland Avenue.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
So if it's a business.
And Jim, would you add to that, please?
Yeah, um, and, and I think this might be a, because if it's $5,000 or if it's over 250, your finance director can clarify. But at some point, if the city's issuing, issuing a check to an individual or to an entity, they're gonna issue a 1099. So those funds are gonna have to reconcile on a tax form, so if you have a nonprofit community partner, it's easier for them to sort of, sort of wash that out. Um, we, uh, had a grant award and the funds went to, it was some placemaking, uh, signage, and the business partner was the, was a local athletic club, and she was like, she said, I'm willing to put that, put this on the books to make this, this, this placemaking project happen. Um, and then, you know, she washed it out, but it'd be a little bit, you know, Lori Bell was like, oh, I'm gonna do an event, we don't really have an organization, there's not a, an official organization behind it. So Lori Bell would get a check for $5,000 and then Lori Bell would have to reconcile $5,000 that's really being used to put on an event. It's just, things get weird, um, and I, and I think it's, from an accountability standpoint, it's also, I wouldn't feel comfortable writing, you know, a check for an event to an individual, but, but from a, how to, how to pencil it out and reconcile it, uh, a year in is, is an issue, so.
Okay, that's the only question that I had, everything else was asked, anything else from council? Staff, what do you need from us to move forward?
It sounds like, uh, you all are supportive of the program, so if that is the case, then we will clean up, make some edits, some great suggestions, and if we can get that done by next week, when we do the city council packet, we will put it on the consent agenda for August 9th, and then we will start marketing it. Um, and that's what we need for this for tonight.
Okay, and then we have two items, A, discuss the music festival proposal and B, Halloween. So I would like to talk about the music festival, because that's something that we've been talking about for a couple of years and it seems like we're kind of ripe for events that bring people together. So I met with the owner of Gladstone Mercantile, who's met with Andrew, and they're very into music and we've wanted to put on a music festival down on Portland Avenue to close off part of the street. Uh, the date that seemed to work out best was September 17th, which is coming up very quickly. So we need some direction on what I could advise them to do and what we need to do, they're here, if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, um, well, I first of all say thank you, I think, uh, community engagement is key for tourism. People think this is like all fun and games, but, uh, I in particular and Jim also take this business very seriously, uh, tourism in particular. So when it comes to a music fest, I haven't seen personally a formal like proposal or anything like that. I'm not entirely sure what the specific ask is, if there is an ask for funding, if there is a organization or business that wants to sponsor it, um, so if I can, can I clarify, what is the ask?
Do you guys want to come up so we can ask you questions?
You know, I guess the ask is a little bit vague at this point, because we just need to know if it can be done at all. And it's, you know, we've been working on it for several years, but COVID took the wind out of doing any kind of events for a while, and it kind of opened up, so, um, at this point, you know, I, I've talked to a few people and have some really good bands that are committed to doing it, but if we can't get them some sort of idea of whether they're doing it or not, they're not gonna want to continue. It's some sort of commitment to bring in several bands set up, um, on the street, hopefully, um, have people be able to, uh, bring out tents and things to promote their businesses in the street, at the same time they come down to see the music, they'll see the things in Gladstone, I mean, when I moved into the Gladstone Mercantile, I said, there's so many great businesses down here that people don't see. They drive down 99, they don't come to Portland Avenue, they don't see downtown Portland. I'm a little queasy with your definition of 50 miles, cause to me, somebody comes from Portland, is a visitor, and they'll come back again. Now, I know they won't stay in a hotel likely, but they were gonna come into downtown, and when they saw the things are there, I think that makes them come back. So my idea has been, at the community festival, to bring people, uh, to Gladstone, cause people from Portland, oh, that's so far, it's like, it's not that far, if you made the trip once, you go, it's really not that far. But if you ask somebody, oh, Gladstone's way too far to drive. So to me, I think we could bring a lot of people in from other communities, maybe not technically tourists with the definition. Uh, you know, so I'm not, you know, that's kind of where I'm looking at it.
Well, you make a lot of good points, I would argue if you get them drunk enough, they will spend the night. But that's not, that's not here, no. Wow. So, uh, I'm just, I, I just, but I think if I'm hearing you right, this, there isn't a direct request of transit logic tax dollars. Um, but it sounds like to me, if, again, if I'm hearing you right, that, that you and members of the community want to hold a special event, and there is a special event application and permit process that the city already has in place. So any organization or individual is, under, in my understanding, welcome and encouraged to fill out a, a special events application. Uh, there are guidelines and timelines on that and requirements that you need to get, like insurance, I have to train your volunteers, certain criteria to assure that it can be held safely, um, and that you would have time to promote it. And, and I wouldn't let, you know, don't let the 50 miles deter you from in the future applying for community program funds, cause the, part of the reason we put this grant together was because we wanted to be able to engage the community in participating and bringing visitors. And, and like Jim described, the 50 miles isn't, you know, we want to make sure we can pass an audit and it's not just being promoted to Gladstone, is our main concern.
I think when people come from Portland, Gladstone, it's as big a win as somebody comes from New York.
I agree.
Because, you know.
I agree.
But they're gonna spend money here and they might come back more often, so.
Yeah, our whole strategy is to, um, you know, prevent leakage and get them to spend, you know, if we could get our current guests at the hotel, which is currently 98% occupied, to spend 15% more when they're here, that investment in our community is the equivalent to. That investment in our community is the equivalent to increasing a hundred and fifty percent of visitors. So getting them to linger longer while they're here is absolutely part of our strategy. Um, and I would again just defer you to the special events process. And then as you move forward, once this program is rolled out, um, an event like that, that would, that would bring, you know, bands and visitors would certainly be something you should apply for. Yeah.
It sounds like the timeline has already passed for this September, though.
Yeah, it wouldn't be eligible for this timeline, no. So.
So if I'm just.
Yes, please.
No, this is something we've worked on this really for three years, um, pre-COVID, had an opportunity with the mayor. And we were all geared up for it. In fact, we even said, you know, nothing's gonna derail this. And something happened in the past couple of years that changed it. But, um, the, you know, we've got our legitimate professional bands that are lined up. I guess our basic initial concern was, you know, how does the street, uh, closure happen? And kind of who would pick up the insurance and that type of deal?
Yeah, the, you would pick up the insurance. I'm just being direct, but there needs, the, if you go online and look at the special event permit application, cities had it in place for quite some time. And that explains to you what criteria, um, that you need to, you, whoever wants to host the event is responsible for the road closures and is responsible for the insurance. That's not, um, a best practice for a city to take on the liability for something like that. It would befall the event coordinators and organizers to take care of that. You could speak to, if I were you, um, other folks who have done similar things, like the Downtown Oregon City Association, where I'm a board member. They, uh, have to close their street. Main Street is a pretty big deal to close. Um, and they have to go through a very lengthy process with the city to get street closures with police and fire. You have to have safety routes. They are responsible for the cost of those flaggers and closings. And so they raise money well in advance to pay for that event. Um, but they might be somebody who could help you through that process and like who they use for those street closures. Um, and certainly the more in advance you plan for those things, the easier it will be to get the, a special event permit approved.
And the car show people, maybe somebody to talk to since they do it right here in Gladstone. So we can connect.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah. And I just want to be cautious because this is a work session tonight that technically public comment.
Right, but I invited them because it was.
I just wanted to be clear in case there were other people that may have wanted to come tonight to speak, but didn't think that they could. So I just wanted to state that the reason why they were invited to come is because you had it on the agenda that could provide information to help you guys come to a consensus or not.
So it sounds like the next steps are to look at the special event permit and start working on that. Um, and connect you with Gladstone Toyota, who is interested. Um, their special events person is in Italy right now. I think she's coming back on Friday. So we can connect those dots as soon as it's, she's back. No, go ahead.
So September seventeenth, as far as, because logistically, we agreed, had these bands that are holding on to it. They have, they want to, you know, make money to play their shows. We should probably scratch the idea of the seventeenth on the street. Is that what I'm gathering from this or do we have time to?
The city would route the application as quickly as possible. It's how fast they could get it filled out and provide the information that they need to provide the city for that reassurances. And that's online.
So it's, yeah, I filled out a couple of, they, it, it's not really that onerous.
In fact, that's one that we do for Halloween.
Yes.
It's the same application that we're gonna fill out for that event.
Okay. And so that gets us a, a start. Um, next is Halloween. So this, we haven't done it for a couple of years and it started really ramping up before COVID hit. So is this something that we want to do as a city event, like we've done in the past?
Yes, without voting.
Um, so I'm, the Halloween thing, um, love it. I just know that it's been all over the board as far as what kind of event it is, if it's a, a private business that is the sponsor of it, or if it's the city. If it's a group like Celebrate Gladstone, so I want some clarity on that because I think it'd be great to have it every year and have it be a city event, yep, that is sponsored and not, that it's not changing names with a tweak or, or what have you. So that's my only question.
Yeah, it should be a city event. Absolutely. Counsel Ripley? Counsel Ripley? Microphone.
Sometimes my brain is backtracked to our last topic about the, the transient tax, lodging tax, so. I'm not a Halloween person, so I really don't care what happens on Halloween. I've never been into it. I don't understand why people do it. I'll just leave it at that.
Counsel Alexander.
The kids love it. The community loves it. Yes, let's do it.
Counsel Tracy.
I just have to say I appreciate Counsel Ripley's honesty. I, you know, Bob for apples, uh, it's fine. I, I don't think we have a ton, a ton invested in it. It's, it's the type of community event that brings them together. Um, yeah, I mean, I'm fine with us sponsoring it or doing whatever. I, I do want to know what the liability is for us. Uh, cause it comes down to dollars and cents. And there are people like Counsel Ripley who probably don't give a rip about Halloween and yet they're they're gonna wonder how much money we're spending on it. So, um, you know, let's talk about that a little bit because I don't really know what the costs are, to be, to be honest with you. City administrator, Beth, do you have any of those types of numbers for us?
For the city to sponsor it, meaning we're gonna fill out the application and be liable if there's any accidents or issues, we would have to pay an additional thousand dollar event charge for our extra liability that will get our risk manager comfortable to where we need to be. So that is an out-of-pocket expense that I see. Um, in the past, when we have done this, uh, vendors have basically just shown up or businesses have done their own thing down there. And I think that's what we're talking about for this event as well. So I don't have any concerns about the Halloween event. We just wanted to make sure that it's something coming out of the pandemic, that the city still wanted to be the one to fill out the special events license and to provide the liability insurance for that.
Well, I, and again, I mean, I've attended a few of them. I think that it is a community building event and people really do have a good time, especially the kids. And so, yeah, I, I would have no problems. We're not like in a ten thousand, a fifteen thousand dollar area. And I feel like, you know.
We're providing a safe environment for our children to gather and.
Yeah.
For everybody.
Yeah. And I think that the businesses do, the businesses on Portland Avenue have, I've talked to a couple of the business owners. They've enjoyed it and it's been a good, it's been a good revenue builder for them. So I, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Counsel Hartman.
Um, yeah, I think, I mean, it's a, it's a fun time going down there. Um, I guess administrator bets, who plans the event then? And who's, like, is that you?
No, I fall into the Counsel Ripley category with Halloween.
Well, that's what I mean, like you're, are we, is this, I mean, cause I, you know, haven't been around when this was a city thing, but.
Mayor Stempel has been the one that fills out the application and then takes a lead working with the business owners. City staff has nominal involvement.
Okay.
Except we do have police and fire security involvement with that, but.
And they have booths there also.
Anything you want to add. But generally, it's been the mayor that's taken the lead on the organization of Halloween.
And so moving forward, that's the precedent. The new mayor will also take that role on. What if they don't want to do that?
I think that's open for discussion. You may have to hire someone like Lori Bell.
Yeah.
To organize events. And, and quite honestly, I think the music festival would qualify for this program. I just think we're a little late for this September. And so I'm excited to hear that there's interest in doing that. And it, it may be that, that you say, Jackie, find a way to make this happen, not this September, but we would have to hire somebody that has experience in that. But for this Halloween, it's, it's been the mayor. I'm sure she's open to any of you helping her with planning the event if you want to.
And it really doesn't take that much time. I mean, seriously, it doesn't. Everybody kind of knows what they're gonna do. It's pretty informal and everybody just shows up and has a good time. I'm done. Counsel Garland.
Can you explain to me the, uh, the city contribution to the egg hunt?
You mean like in monetary or, yeah, I don't know if I have that answer for you.
Do we have to buy a permit for that?
Yes. Yes. So even like when we had the Fourth of July barbecue, the police department filled out a special events license. So anytime you're using public property, even if it's ourselves, we have to fill out a special events license as well. But how much staff time or money that was allocated to that event, I would have to pull a report to let you know that.
So the, the other two that we do are the egg hunt and the Fourth of July. And that's about it.
And then Halloween.
And then Halloween. Okay.
You know, most cities have a chamber of commerce. And you say, as a city, here's thirty thousand dollars, go promote our community. Gladstone doesn't have that. And that's why we have to start talking about these small programs to try to entice others that want to do that. But it'd be wonderful if a nonprofit came and said, I'm gonna open a farmer's market. I'm gonna do all of these things. Then the city could just say, here's the money, make it happen. We just don't have the staff resources to do a lot of the things that we all want to have happen.
Right. There's also Main Street organizations, like Downtown Oregon City is a Main Street organization. All they do all year round is promote Main Street. So they do Halloween. They do the first city celebration. They do um, quarterly wine walks to get people in the businesses and they get fifty thousand dollars a year from the City of Oregon City's general fund to do that as an organization.
And I would love to recommend that we allocate funds to a event organizer that could do those for Gladstone. And that may be the direction that, that we go as we go into our council goal setting for the next two years is to hire someone that can do those events because cities typically don't do them themselves. They just allocate the money to an organization to do them for them.
Can I ask a question? Aren't we doing some partnerships with, um, North Clackamas Chamber or Oregon City Chamber? I thought I read something about that. Are we starting to?
We have a membership with North Clackamas Chamber, but it's more economic development focused.
Okay.
And the partnership that we're going to embark on with Oregon City is to help distribute ARPA funds.
Okay, that's right. Okay, thank you.
Didn't our businesses try and pull together a Main Street group?
Not since I've been here, not six years, but I do believe that if we had a Portland Avenue Association, that's another group that could get access of money to do a lot of these events.
There is Gladstone Business Alliance is still doing stuff. I don't know how much they're doing, um, post COVID stuff, but they were really active for a long time. But it was just all business owners in Gladstone, not specifically.
And there was some that were from out of Gladstone also, um, that lived in Gladstone. Last meeting I went to, there was four people.
Yeah, that's sort of what I had found too.
Yep. So maybe a, a Main Street group would be a really good idea. All right. And I say yes, that we need to sponsor Halloween.
Okay, I think that we have everything that we need tonight then.
All right, then I would entertain, oh, Counsel Ripley.
I would like to ask one question about my distraction earlier. The butterflies distracted me. So let's say somebody wanted to apply for a couple of thousand dollars for a grant to attract people to watch the butterflies fly away. And some of these people are old and they can't stand that long. Could that money be used into benches or a shelter for ADA type stuff or other people that can't? So it can be used for, for something that would be a revolving use.
That is an excellent question. And there are, under the travel lodging tax definitions, you can use them for tourist facilities. Certainly increasing ADA accessibility is important. Um, and actually, if you are super interested, you could look at Travel Oregon's ten-year strategic vision. One of their top five goals is to increase accessibility to visitors, uh, for visitors to destinations. So the short answer to that is yes. The longer answer would be that the criteria that the city wants to put forth, we don't have a category for that. We haven't set up a travel lodging tax fund or program for facilities, but it would be eligible and it's something we, we could look at in the future.
And historical societies are also, you can use transient lodging tax dollars because a lot of people like birding or butterflying, going to museums is actually a tourist attraction. So that's why we're hoping our local historical society becomes a nonprofit.
Yep.
Because they would be eligible for funds as well.
They're definitely talking about that. All right, anything else? Um, so a reminder, the next regular council meeting is August ninth at six thirty here in person. August twenty-third is our city council work session, which will be five thirty in person here. And August thirty-first is our joint meeting with the Gladstone School Board, and that's gonna be five thirty at the Gladstone High School. So I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion was made by Counsel Garland and second by Counsel Tracy to adjourn the meeting. Any questions or concerns? Nope, Tammy, could you roll call vote, please?
Counsel Garland.
Yes.
Counsel Todd.
Yes.
Counsel Hartman.
Aye.
Counsel Tracy.
Aye.
Counsel Alexander.
Yes.
Counsel Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes. Meeting's adjourned at six thirty-five P M. Thank you.